You're gonna have some catching up to do.
Yep.
With that, the board members should have received the draft minutes of April 24th, 2023, or additions to those minutes.
I've got a couple of questions. About the Tony Town order parts, the description in the, I mean, in the minutes, I believe it's what we talked about, but it's different than what's in the agenda. Was that intentional?
Yeah. Anything else?
And then, I guess, the only other thing, we'll talk about Bollinger Park eventually, 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 eventually. It's all good.
All right. Would you like to make a motion for approval?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from April 24th, 23 as they are.
Is there a second? Second by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify as a saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise.
I get to vote tonight.
Yes, you do. First item on the agenda is, is Fraser Property North requesting concept site plan approved. Is that?
Sure. So I left, put this sketch in your, in case you didn't have it handy. So we had talked about the Hartman Street, ended up the mayor and city council, and pretty much by consensus, we're asking for, for this project, a right-of-way or easement, Hartman Street, where, be word, be word, be word, be word, be word, of this coming off of Antrim for Hartman Street into the hardware store. So Mr. Lapp subsequently discussed it with Jim and I a bit, and we'll see how things go.
Okay.
So, so we, 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 is that what you said?
Yes. So we're, we're getting to write easement, how we work that out. So when, when Hartman's off of Antrim, it's gonna come up and then right hit, right turn into facility. I think that Hartman Street could vent for that neighborhood down the road. It is a pre, 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 so it'd be ours if we want to do that. And now's the time to secure that easement.
But no intention of put it this time?
At this time, no. Will we do?
Excuse me.
Okay, sorry.
It looks like they're coming off of Antrim, where the street is supposed to be, and they're coming almost a third way through. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As part of, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chris.
As part of, will they be constructing their portion of Hartman to city standards?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Will there be an option at a later point if we change our minds while their, while their, while their, while their, while their action to tag construction of that, if the city amenable to paying for that portion of the construction to add that onto doing?
I would imagine that'd be a discussion for them. That makes sense, and that may be something that the new mayor and council want to look at. We have a project, 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 Robert's Mill, that we were able to use those numbers for the guesstimation of our part of Hartman Street. It's about $280,000.
That would be the whole street from Antrim?
Hours.
To Carnival, or just our section?
Yes, sir.
Our section.
Yeah, about.
If, 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 let me say it this way. If we would want to, want that street to go through, is there any concessions that they would make? Like DMPs, or maybe a tax break, or maybe spreading it out over a period of 15, 10 years, payment on it to get it? Did the city council talk anything about like that?
No, pretty much they, they were not, did not want to do, build it now. But it makes sense. Our interest lined up in case we want to do this year now or never.
Okay.
It'll never be as inexpensive as it would be to do it along with this project.
That's it, that's it, that's it, that's it, that's it, that's it.
And to be consistent with our master plan, it should be completed at this time, to be consistent with our master plan. So with that open, is there anyone here from Fraser, the property, whatever? Mike, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Rado. I live at 163 Carnival. I have problems with the Fraser Property. One, the stream that's into it, I have some paperwork.
You mean Fraser Property?
Yes. I have some paperwork, and there's some pages running there, here, 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 here with you. But one, there's a stream that runs through there, and by your Tony Town rules, it is supposed to hundred-foot buffer, and that stream is now going removed, which can cause issue the area, also with the flooding. I was told when, 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 when Carnival would not be opened, a lot of us complained that we had issues with Carnival being open to Antrim, that we did not want the flow coming in there because we already have issues, and we're almost getting hit. If you look at some of the things here in the marked-off areas, um, the, sorry, I don't have my page with me. Oh, I think, oh, I gave you guys my notes. Sorry, I gave notes. Page one.
Okay.
Page two.
There you go. Okay, page one talks about the stream buffer, and on page two, it's the stream location on the property. There's a picture of it, where it enters the Fraser Property. Page three, it talks about protecting that stream and the, into Tony Town, that we should not be damaging any streams. On page four, talking about preserving the stream also, and the greenway. Talking on page five, how it's a be, it's a be, it's a be, it's a be, it's a be town atmosphere of not adding more. On page six, the protected forest areas, which are the biggest concerns, is that it says we are very critically low in trees, and that we should be preserving and taking property of, there are, 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 are now, which is the most important thing. On page seven, also on page seven, it talks about getting access to the roads that are blocked off. And on 10, there's options to other projects that would be more sustainable for as if, as if, as if, as if, as if, as if through them. But our biggest problem is privacy. If you look at the pictures, I, you know, there's a bunch of pictures there. You're cutting down all trees behind our house. They're destroying all of the property. That's the lands, the creatures, and everything that lives there, deer, chickens. I mean, you're destroying a lot of prop behind our house to allow this. Our privacy is being taken away. I don't want people gawking, entering the swimming pool. You know, that's, it's really an issue for Carnival Drive, and we really, we're with our life. I mean, we built these, you know, the houses were buried. Our privacy was kept there, and it's also supposed to be a reserved area that was done, I think, in like 2000 or something, a little preservation area where the storm waters go. So, I mean, if you guys, to be done, there's a lot of codes and things that you guys went against in your own rules. So they're a real big concern. Before you guys go approve us, you really need to just take a look and go back and decide how all them codes are going against with the towns.
No, I do not have the master.
Because if you look at the concept plan, and I know it's an older comprehensive plan, but if you add it, it has a lot of the older dates that things were put in place to protect the woods and protect the, you know, the right-of-ways onto the cut-off roads and things like that, to be looked at before any permission is given to that property. But the whole thing is, we don't want it there. The whole Carnival Drive doesn't work. And also, you guys are supposed to be building a wall, the, 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 the buffer between us. It's actually in there in the comprehensive land that there has to be a buffer between Antrim Carnival Drive in them woods line, like a wall or something, some kind of, for the noise, the pollution, and all of that. How are you gonna put a store there if a wall has to be?
Consideration, and we'll review all this information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, I need you guys want to make a mention on what was just said, and to restate what we're here tonight to do, or make recommendations, is a request for a concept plan approval, just in a three-step process.
Yes, so for the, to allow the Fraser Property to advance, getting concept approval, doesn't mean the project's gonna happen. It's gonna happen tomorrow. This could be years, don't know. But to, to keep the project going, because there are timelines as to how long the prospective buyer can hold on to the property or not. And in fairness to them, we need to, in mind, grant the concept approval.
Okay. Jim, would you, and comment?
Follow-up, I guess, a little bit on the process. The, the use is a by right use within the zone. Property is a challenging property. I mean, it's got, it's got wetlands, it's got a stream, you know, it's got environmental features to both ends, and a relatively small area that's eligible to be developed. The given or, 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 or ring buffer from the top of the stream, the engineer will do, you know, to recognize that, they'll delineate the stream, stream boundary and measure off from that. I would imagine the concept probably acknowledges that. But at the preliminary plan stage, that's where the, the heavy lifting is done, as far as all the stormwater management nation, 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 nation ordinances is applied there, and the forest sanitation is done. All, all those things that, that address the environmental aspect of the property are all done at the preliminary plan stage, so the second phase of, of any development. So, you know, certainly, we, we need to adhere to the codes that, that, you know, that, 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 that's part of the, the usual process.
So everything brought up, we'll be going through by step through the concept plan and the preliminary plans. You talked about a wall, it'd be some type of buffer, it'd probably be trees or something, plant buffer, or something like that, between the commercial and the resident, 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 resident. So, okay.
This is an example I came here tonight to address, but I'm glad that she really brought some of this up. One of the things-
State your name.
Lisa Crawford, 621 Moore Street. Lived here in town for a long time. I really, and I've watched council meetings, I've showed up, I've showed up to this one. I'm really tired of hearing, you know, the developers, these people, you know, we can only hold on to it, and they have rights. Well, what about those of the people that have already invested in this town? They have already invested in this property. So it's fine to bring up about the contractors, oh, 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 consideration, yes. To look it over, yes. What about the people who have already put a lot of money into it? So I've heard several times, when I've listened in and also been here, well, they've put this much work into it, so we need to give them this. Or they can only hold it, so we can only give them that. What about those of us who have already invested, and our children are, you start to leave that part out when the verbiage continue, heard it to continue. And like I said, this isn't what I showed up for. But I need to hear this on repeat for contractors and people who are buying land in, because it's looked at more profitable for the town. But what about the people here invested and willing even to do more? When you keep it going, it going, it going, it going, it going, it going?
Thank you. Any comments from the commission?
So the comments I had, mainly were about interested in what their thoughts were as far as the buffer between the residential and the, so I know that's coming up in the preliminary plan.
And the trees.
Yeah. And, yeah, in addition, I guess, I thought it was kind of, and I didn't know if they had, they were gonna consider having to enter the parking lot or not. It seems to me like that would be a better flow of traffic. So those are the only two comments I had relative to the concept.
I think the entry of, of, of Antrim is kind of limited by date already approved. Am I correct on that?
Boulevard, 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 access points. The city's been protecting those. You know, we don't end up, I suppose, creating kind of 140 through Westminster situation where there's so many ingress egress that there are some safety concerns and some traffic snags.
Yep, understand, thank you.
Also, with that comprehensive plan to, 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 to.
I, I think the whole section was roughly 14 acres, and only five of them used for-
Only five is buildable. Yeah, so, so there's a lot, you know. So they're gonna, they can't do anything in the waterways, nothing. They're, they're, because it gets very expensive and normally rather impossible. They're gonna cut down no more trees than they have cost money. The buffers, there are buffers in, in play that, that are also to protect you all, your privacy. It's not like you won't see the building there at night with the light, with the light, with the light, with the light, with the light. We want the building to be facelit, but not out. There, there'd be no lights shining, you know, spotlights, that type of thing, out of your way. I grew up in town, where the library, behind where the library is, is where I grew up. So, 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 we ran for our minibikes. So, but in any case, you are, I'm glad you're here. But the town does change. So whatever we can here, our rules make the facilities user-friendly and sensitive as possible.
Okay, because I seen where he, was like almost right up against our fence. I mean, like up against, with it, with a small portion. It was pretty far back.
Would you like this? You can have, you, you're, I am close to your fence. Okay. So just, just look at the scale on that, okay? And that can change a little bit. That's, you know, seed, 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 seed.
Here, so the building's like, I guess, is, and that's right behind it, right? So that they can go around it, the, on the outside of it, around it? It's like a road that goes around it?
Looks like, yeah.
So that road goes right, I mean, pretty behind our properties. I mean, you can see that it's, you know, there's-
Your property's step, you step, you step, you step, you step, you step.
I mean, it's still pretty close. I mean, that's about six feet.
Each, each one of those parking spots is nine feet by 20 feet. So just, just sort of use that when you're seeing how far. It's, it's a pretty good distance away from you, man.
Okay, I think we understand, I think, what you're asking. All right, I just, I just, I just, I just, I just, is there a motion?
Can I ask a couple of things, ma'am, if you don't mind?
If it's to you, would you please come to the mic?
Yeah, come to the mic. If you're not at the microphone, the, the recording and the-
Okay.
The internet doesn't pick you up. So are you like the second house over from Hartman? Are you right in there? Okay, third, your third one, okay.
Yeah, so it's right here.
Yeah, I, I understand, and I appreciate your concerns, I really do. I, you know, one of the toughest balances to strike in governance to balance the, the needs of testing, housing, 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 houses. You know, but the property owner has bought the property and the property and has certain rights also. So the responsibility to make sure that he's not impinging upon, you know, his right to swing his arm and, you know, your nose. So I, I, I think we can approve the concept, approving, 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 but the, we can make sure that the plan would include appropriate buffers and appropriate lighting direction to keep the effects minimal to your property.
Okay.
Through the concept and the-
The plan approval process. So understand, if we're, we're not steaming, if we approve the, they, 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 they want to take your things into consideration when, as this moves on final plan.
But the last mayor said that we were not going to open road to Carnival, because Carnival has a lot of issues, which Mr. Jim knows about. He knows how much Carnival has problems and how the complaints and the children in the road and the swith, 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 swith. We don't want that road opened. We don't want it through because our children are gonna be more at risk. We already have speed chases going down our road. I mean, we have issues, Lisa's there all the time, the kids playing the road because we're the only area in the town that don't have parks for our children. We don't have no activity, 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 those that the kids play in the road, and do not want our children killed. We've had many children with broken arms and almost getting hit off their bikes as roads come through. We have people passing the bus on our road, almost hitting our children. It, it's ridiculous on drive, 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 drive. Pumps and things like that to be put in, but the city won't do that because they say the piles get messed up.
But there are other solutions that, we're gonna be examining some of that. But it's-
But if you guys, if you guys approve that and let that go through, it's gonna be a big problem at risk.
I would say that that could be, would be taking more study at this point in time. Right now, we're only discussing the concept of, of this plan.
Okay.
And, and-
Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, go back to my, looking for a motion, one way or the other. Is there a second? Motion made by Brent, seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify as aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise, carry. Say, this is only the, one of the steps. With that motion, that motion's already approved. I've second thought on this. In the minutes saying that we want to make sure we have the easement for that street for future, or something to cover what we talked about as the Hartman Street?
I don't think that's specifically in the minutes. We can just ensure that as the preliminary plan goes, goes forward, goes forward, goes forward, goes forward, goes forward, when, when the plans are developed.
Five, 10 years from now, when we talk about this, will you guys remember this?
Yep, sure.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, and I say that because usually things, it just, it doesn't happen overnight. So is the VAP, 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 can that site plan for the office expansion? Darryl, would you give us some heads up on that, and we can-
So for some of you that may be new, commission, the amended site plan, third amendment, because VAPCO has done things before, site plan. So this is for the office expansion, and it's for a concept presentation only. And Jim here?
Somebody here from VAPCO?
Okay. Yes, okay.
Good evening. My name is Mike McCann. I'm here as a consultant incorporated out of Westminster, Maryland, and happy to walk you through the plan and/or answer questions that came from, from CDM Smith as well.
Okay. Question, we go from here. The expansion is right now is parking lot?
That is correct, sir.
Where are we gonna replace that parking lot at?
Well, right now, we already meet the code requirements for parking. Practically speaking, we need more parking. We need to, you know, that we have adequate parking for the property is, is used today. Although we meet code, we have not yet performed a comprehensive parking study, but that is in process prior to our preliminary mission. The comments that I referenced that came from the third-party review, I believe were issued 10, 10, 10, 10, 10, 10 have just begun.
Okay.
But is our intention to submit that preliminary plan?
So meet, by meeting it now, are you counting like across the street, or just on that same side of the street?
It's, I'd have to check that. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, tell us a little bit about the expansion. I mean, is it strictly, this is, I understand it's gonna be four-streigh?
That's correct.
Oh, I think our height is 30 feet, and if I looked at this correctly, you're over at-
Industrial, it's 50 feet.
So they can go-
They're at 54. They're gonna be applying for the exception.
For height?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. I had a little trouble trying to figure that out, so. Tell us a little bit more about the building. I mean, are you planning on expanding, is that probably expanding the whole operation, or you're planning? Let me tell us a little bit about what-
There will be some additional employer. The exact amount is not yet known. This is the plan for, I'll say, midterm and longer-term expansion at the current. The, one second, I apologize. Yes, I'm sorry. I was hoping I had a, an account, but I did not have that.
Okay.
Probably help Mike out with some of the-
I appreciate that.
Some of those details. Bill Jones with VAPCO. So at this point, our 10, 10, 10, 10, 10, 10, 16 new administrative employees, so office employees, that does not include the growth that we anticipate on the production side.
Okay.
Currently, we have roughly 550 totals at our current location, and this, 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 this is well overdue for, for what our operations need require.
Okay. Anyone have any comment? I guess, refer this either to Darryl or Jim. This is the third in the site plan. Can we, can we, can we, can we, can we, can we have the first one, the second one, so we can start over as number one again? Why do we, why do we keep adding to the existing process?
Well, Jim-
That's the, I guess, just the-
This verbiage?
Nomenclature, that, that, once, once a property has a site plan submitted, that's all, you just, you just, you just, you just, you just, and so it's just gonna continue to run up with each subsequent revision, it's gonna be the, the fourth, fifth, sixth overtime. So it, the way, the way the county tracks them, they never, they don't start over.
Okay, but we see them as our construction phase projects, month after year after year after year after year after year after year.
Darryl's working on that.
Yeah, I'm working on that. I've been.
All right, thank you. It's just repetitive, month after year. All right, thank you. It's just repetitive, month after month, year after year, the same, not necessarily the same people, but the project, the projects. All right, anyone have any comment? Anyone from the floor have any comment for VAPCO?
I have a question to, um, the administrator. Do we have, um, our water allocations, um, do we have that counted in our current water allocation? Is?
So, we would add this to our water allocation resolution when they receive, uh, preliminary plan approval.
Okay.
Uh, currently 41,000, roughly 41,000 gallons per day that's unallocated. Um, and we know we have the Garnet Ridge project. That will account for 25 dwelling units worth of water. Um, we've, if, 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 we will be needing to go to MDE to have conversation increasing our, our well allocation permits, uh, before we can any, uh, you know, substantial additional, like a, a subdivision of any, any magnitude though.
Okay.
So, we're getting, we're getting pretty close.
This is not a project that would be held up by that at this point in time.
Or beyond what we anticipate.
Yeah, and you know, in the past, we've had a number of, uh, projects which still requires an amount of water.
Yes.
Consumption. This is not. This is strictly, they were associated with our research and development labs. This is strictly office, office, office space.
This was also a comment, 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 provided comment letter. So, we just began work on what that would be as well.
Any other comments? As, uh, the city of Twin Town, we're, we're pleased to have VAPCO, especially as your headquarters. So, thank you.
Very glad to be here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Next item on the agenda, Recovery 180. And I think that's, got a couple of things in here for that. Darryl, you.
What, 162, 164?
Uh, West Ballmer Street?
So, 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 so. CLSI has been working. So, we have sort of two, two things here. Recovery 1, um, is a, um, facility that helps people, um, live their lives a different way. So, what we, what we've been looking at really is the outside. Got, 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 stormwater management, the alignment at, um, Harney Road, um, or, or the ability, um, for every 180 is very nice to just offering to help the city with the land needed to, for the possible realignment of 140. So, they've been working very well with, uh, 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 a lot of us so far. So, then we looked at it with the model of the hotel. In our code right now, that's the closest thing that we could come up with. Um, the, the six units are going to stay on paper as six units. Um, there's no construction, there's nothing to be added for these, for these, for these, for these, for these, for these, a whole new coming back and, and, you know, to us. So, the, um, six units, two bedrooms each, nothing's changing there. What they happen to have to live in there, um, may be, uh, different. Um, um, from the drawings I gave you, it shows, um, the amount of beds is four, 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 four. So, um, that's the amount of patients they could have there. Uh, that's, that's, that's what they could square footage wise and it'd be right by the county square footage wise, um, in, in that type of, um, housing, like the housing. So, on the inside, there's, there's nothing. I mean, I think it's what they have to do. They have to spray, spray through the system for them to water to, uh, increase the size of the water line going into the building. Um, that's all, that's all county. It's all county. Really what we're worried about, um, is the outside, the parking, the management, um, review there. Um, we asked for drawings of the, uh, building so that you all would have that to look at and, and they presented it, I, I thought, last year, but it just, we just got the same thing that we looked at before.
Is this following with the concept plan?
So, I, 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 in my, in my mind, is, is what's happening on the outside.
And what do we have to show us, what you're asking for here, or you want us to give concept on based on the information you're giving us now?
Well, so they're here, um, and they're going to have a few things to say too, but the, the drawing that is included, 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 possible redline realignment of, of Harney and, and West Ballmer Street.
That's part of this too, or is that?
That's just, that's just for us to get the, um, asking for the, for that project. It's from last, from the last time they were here. Parking, stormwater management is all the, um, is what I'm worried about for the site, 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 site. Um, yeah.
Nothing on that shows anything about any parking or where stormwater management would go.
Maybe we can have someone from, uh, there we go.
Oh, this is, okay, there you go.
CLSI, the plan with the site plan submitted two months ago was, 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 was. We bring a copy.
Yeah, that was the last.
The biggest question, the last meeting was, how can we fix the intersection of Harney Road and 140? That's why we submitted this plan. Okay? Nothing has changed when the concept plan, there's still the same amount of spaces and the infiltration buffer is still matter. Nothing has changed from that. We just wanted to prove that, you know, how much, how much, how much, how much, how much, how much.
That you had a.
180 would have to give up with the right of way and such that the improvements work and part of our site plan would show that this was being committed to city. So, you would have that area for the future when you need to, well, bigger projects comes in to pay for that.
This is a very first step, the, the concept, se, 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 for this project. Seems, seems to me we've.
We did some.
On something just a year ago?
So.
Ago?
You looked at the property adjacent. That's going to be their, their counseling center on their treatment center. That's a separate parcel. They came in and requested a site plan waiver because they were not making any to the XT, 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 XT property. Um, so it was simply use switching it from a house to the, um, treatment or counseling use, but no physical changes. So, they were granted a site plan waiver so that project could go ahead and obtain their building permits or whatever permits may have been.
Okay.
Um, this is a separate parcel. This is a, re, 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 again, no physical changes to the exterior, but because of that, uh, challenge finding something within our code that was a match for building code called for, uh, the closest thing we could with was the use as a hotel, that required additional parking, develop, 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 and triggers the need to do stormwater management. Thus, we're into a light development plan. So, the concept was presented last month and there were some questions, um, including while this particular project is not going to generate the vehicular trap to cause any changes at the intersection of Harney and West Baltimore, that, 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 that a concern for a lot of folks. So, the CLSI went back and looked at what could be dedicated city to alleviate that, um, awkward angle of the intersection when it becomes necessary, say if the Sewell Farm develops. That's when we are going to need to do something about that intersection. Um, it's, we'll see, or worsen the intersection, but they can deed that little corner over to us and then the future Harney Road aligned. And that, that kind of came up a little bit last month. So, that's, uh, Mr. Rickel worked up that exhibit.
So, with the, with the, the concept plan, that'll also give us the easement for that.
Into the preliminary and final plan and then we'll be, um, you know, we'll have either a, a deed of easement executed upon the, the final plan when we, when we get there. But this just sets action.
We did provide right in, right, you know, left and right turns and squared it up so it was easier for traffic and people coming out there.
Okay.
Pl, 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 in the future, if they put a sidewalk there, it's covered.
Did you consult away in terms of what you've?
Not yet.
To see if they're.
It's their standards.
As long as it meets standard, that's what I was.
Yes, it meets their standards. It's a 60-foot radius is on the curves and such. So, we've met their requirement.
So, what was, what was the total parking that you're going to put in now?
Best be 15, I thought, after.
15?
Yeah.
I think it's 15 spaces.
Did you have, can, can, I, I apologize. I was not on.
I thought you guys.
Yeah, I, I was not on, on, on committee last week, last month, so, um, I'd like.
We put our access directly across as much as we could.
Right.
Care out all the paving in this area. So.
That'll be grass.
Can't park any grass, sidewalk in, dumpster in, and our stormwater back.
Okay.
15.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, separate approval. We can get a motion on the floor.
I'll, I'll make a motion. We, uh, approve the concept.
Okay.
So, Jim, so Jim, after, I mean, as far as the parking and the stormwater management goes, what other, what else are we looking for?
Have, 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 okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm guessing that the usual drill, um, distribute it to everybody and let them tell us they don't have any comments.
It can, it's, it's, and this is a grading only plan.
Okay.
Since there's no building structures.
Right.
Dan made a motion for, for concept approval. Bill, now we're open for discussion. Chris, you had a question?
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have some questions about the, the level of occupancy of the, um, you know, you're talking about putting 43 in 12 bedrooms. Um, I have questions about this. Um, and before that even starts, I do have a question, 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 question.
Damn it.
I second it. I, I do also have a question as to, you know, um, from what I understand, this building was separated into apartments without any, and, uh, some time ago, maybe even, you know, those may even have been before permit, permits were a thing, something like, something like, something like, something like, something like, something like. My question is, do we have, um, ever collected any kind of EDUs, um, for the amount of water usage? It's going to be, you know, you're talking about, uh, one, you know, 43 people, that's 10 families worth. Um, you know, that's, you know, are we looking at 10 EDUs? Are we looking at, have we?
Absolutely, sure. So, the volume model would be the closest thing for the amount of gallons per order. But we're going to be later working on, on what the EDUs will be. It'll certainly be more than one, sure.
Yes, okay.
Um, most of them, a lot of this will be handled through the county. So, that brings up, when I went through here and looked at this, 11 bids for one bathroom.
Yeah.
I mean, that, is that right? I mean, the county, I know the county's going to pick this up, but that.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have real concerns with, with trying to put 41 beds. In some cases, these beds are jammed together in a corner. A lot of cave, a lot of cave, a lot of cave, a lot of cave, a lot of cave. Uh, you know, there's not even a foot between the beds. I mean, how, you can't even, you know, I, I own a bed and breakfast, so I know about changing sheets and you're not squeezed in there to, to do that in six inches of space. Um, you know, and I also, uh, occasionally employ people who have come out of transition homes, uh, and these are not the nicest people. You're, you're going to, 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 you're going to together. Um, personally, I think of this occupancy, you're asking for trouble.
As far as the bed concerned, to answer that question, there are plans in there to increase the bathrooms. So, uh, what was a one shower, one water, it will be expanded for multiple showers, multiple water closets. That'll all be party, 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 party. Those all changed over and, and such. So, um, we opt that as, uh, six people per one full, which would have two and two. So, to give you an idea of the, uh, the use there for restrooms.
Okay.
As far as the, the beds to your point, uh, we always go by calculations and fire code to make sure. I know it's tough when you're looking on there, when you walk it, 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 that there's ample space, uh, on the two bedrooms and the four bedroom. There are no bedrooms, um, that should have more than four, I believe. There might, that's five. Um, that was a large area that we converted in square footage so that they have dressers, nightstands. They're all required to have a personal space and hang pictures, things like that. Uh, there's also common rooms for each of division, 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 divisions and other places. And, and I can assure you that we're not, uh, trying to cram people in there. We want to make sure they have a nice place to live and I can assure you that coming from this will, this will definitely be a step up in the right direction for them.
Well, I would agree. It's a step up from prison. Um, but I, I just, I look, I think, you know, uh, it just seems like it is very, 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 um, but I'm not sure that we have purview over this, but I'm asking that question.
Yeah, well, like I said, the county will address through the county permits and stuff. They'll take care of that.
Yeah.
Anyone have any comments?
I just got one more, Jim.
Pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me.
When, uh, when the, when we eventually straighten out the, the intersection there, what happens to the, what's asphalt now, you know, as you're coming out of the office level up there?
That would be up to the state in, in, this would be a state highway project to real.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that would get taken out.
It would be taken, it would be taken out and, 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 and.
Or it, or it may be left in because of the.
Town Moses?
Who Moses? I'm just curious.
Well, if it's state, state handles.
State.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
Like the circle.
I figured we'd get tapes, didn't know what was going to happen to it. That's all. And.
Where we get a move?
Yeah. So, my other question, uh, 43, 43, 43, 43, 43, 43, that, and again, that's not part of us and, uh.
Requirement, and there again, this is county, uh, square footy for an individual?
There is.
200.
My?
Square feet.
200 square feet, okay. Just curious. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, motion with.
I have a question. This Draxley is close to my house. Um, so 200 square feet, it's not actually as many people as being packed in there. Do you guys have your own security? Because like, one of the councilman members mentioned, um, and I know stuff sold at the park and things that go down at the park and need for additional policing. Already, 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 already have your own security that will be there for as many people hoping to pack in?
Sure. So, it's not, not security. We have 24 hours strict, strictly enforced curfews. So, they're not allowed.
How are they trained?
The, who?
Their staff for as many people.
Their behavioral techs, they're trained in conflict, de-escalation. They go through training, self, 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 self. Well-trained to handle that many people. And for every 15. So, if there are 43 people there, there would be three behaviors there to monitor traffic, make sure they're going where they're supposed to be in their groups.
Would they be there onsite all the time? Would there be three people there all the time?
That's correct. 24 hours staff even overnight.
Okay.
And you said you had other facilities. Do you have, 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 do you have as issues that police have had and needed to?
We do have one that's been open for almost a year now. We've had no police reports. There are no police activity. Um, just that we don't, we don't take people out of jail. I know this aren't necessarily, but I want to make sure everyone understands.
No, you're answering, I was getting ready to ask you, sir, so go ahead.
Speeding process, so no sex offenders, no violent crime. So, 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 so coming from prisons, these are people coming from, they've already done 28 to a day program. So, they've already detoxed. These are people now that are bringing into society. So, we're helping them build a resume, go back to school, volunteer like that. So, these are not, this is not like a release program or something like that.
Okay, considering the amount, when you mentioned beds and also I've been trying to follow this, there, this, there, this, there, this, there, this, there.
All right, thank you. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. I can, um, approve that plan. Uh, all those favorite, favorite that motion, I think Papa's saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. No, thank you. Thank you, folks. I think I have based in when I was in the service.
Yeah.
All right. Twenty Town Auto Parts, 11 Franklin Street, uh, general business district, uh, requesting a site plan to, 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 to buildings, rebuild and enlarge an existing building. Start us off on that.
So, the site plan is triggered by a couple of ways here. One, um, it is exciting to see, uh, Pat tearing down, um, some of the, uh, buildings, the wooden, 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 wooden. Um, Pat has asked for, uh, Pat has asked for, um, a flexion, a site plan waiver, um, because of the lack of, um, disturbed area. And, um, he's reusing the one building, there will be one new building in place of, um, of what was a building there before. He is, he is, he is, he is, he is, he is, Pat.
It's that.
Pat's got more than he had last time as far as square footage of what was there, and what would be completed, and, um, got that.
Okay. So, I plan to tear down the wooden structures, excuse me, which I believe, try just key, ski, 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 which is. Yeah, no, it's this one.
All the ones without new site.
They removed the th- the three structures that are marked on their, the paper, and, um, and big, put, replace that all the way. Thirty-four hundred seventy-two square feet. What I'm tearing down is actually thirty-two hundred and twenty square feet. But in order to just coincide to make it work and added about that many more square feet to it. So, that's, that's them three buildings, the ones I'm tearing down. There's concrete there, we moved that, moved that, moved that, moved that, moved that, moved that, concrete where there's not a, the other structure.
How much bigger is the new building gonna be?
Um, I gotta do my number. So, it's like two hundred square feet maybe roughly?
Two hundred fifty-two?
So, thirty-four seventy-two minus two hundred, so it's, it's less than two hundred square feet.
Yeah, well, that's what else.
Yeah, yeah. So, with that, also, the, 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 is the one I'm going to take and do the roof line and raise it to coincide with the whole, we'll make it all one complete. Co- and, you know, to go together. The building and, the roof will be tanned, it will be metal structure. You have the pictures of the proposed design, the garage doors on, doors on, doors on, doors on, doors on, doors on. Let me see if I have anything else I wanted to tell you.
The one question I have.
Yeah.
So, those three buildings taken down, then the new building's gonna be same, same spot except for.
Correct.
Connected again to this building.
To the backside of it. Yeah.
All right.
If you look at the, the way the one building sets, it kinda change it so they're all together and not have that extra offset, but.
But they're all under one roof.
They'll all be the same continuous roof, but they'll be two, it'll be two buildings, still be two buildings, man. Cause existing structures block, and that, they'll be, they'll be, they'll be, they'll be, they'll be, they'll be.
Pat, do you have? Do you have this?
I'm sorry.
In front of you?
I do.
Okay. The brown or building, or the dark black building, is that coming down too?
Hold on, can I, can I come up there?
It's on page, be the page.
This part here is.
This one here?
Yeah, is that coming down also?
That's actually the building. Yes, it's this one.
Okay, okay, I just want to, since there was, it looked like the space between the two.
It's there to get it, just the way they're all, visiting all.
Okay, gotcha.
What are your plans for the other buildings that are there?
With the other buildings that I already have, um, I already re-tin, recided to one building with, 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 with essentially offered. But I didn't do the inside of that building, or that inside wall, which I plan to finish with this project, and also finish the outside, make it all tin, and make it all look the same.
All look the same. Do you have a, um, a plat, the, 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 and, and location, actual building locations, and a, cause I'm sure you'd have to send this in to the county for a permit.
In the first meeting.
Okay.
I don't have that here now.
Yeah, I, I don't have that, but.
I'm sorry.
Hard for me to.
You can't say.
I can show you a picture. Can I show you a, 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 a?
I don't know if that helps any.
Yeah, I, I know how it lays, but, um.
What is the?
Would wanna see some kind of plan that says that, you know, this building's going out and coming in at this spot, I, um, you know. We're, we're proving, 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 proving.
What we wanna see is a site plan.
Yeah, and not, and not a full plan, I don't want, I don't want, I've been in your position, I understand.
Who's on the right side, who's on the left side, who's behind you, you know, it's ways like that.
Well, not, yeah, I'm kinda ignorant too, cause I'm not sure what you mean, okay, so help me out.
Your site plan, you know, a drawing of, of your, of the lopery, the property itself. I mean, who's on one side, who's on the other side? I mean, you got the street on three sides.
You got the.
Yes.
But, so, I was gonna help, Pat, I had, I got it out and ready myself. So, in order for us to, uh, 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 the planning commission is supposed to consider things, so we're supposed to consider like drainage, you know, are you putting buildings, you know, more blacktop, whatever. Effects on the traffic, relationships to the other buildings, you know, what's landscaping gonna look like? What's the buffering gonna be like to the, the neighborhood? So, a lot of the, a lot of the, a lot of the, a lot of the, a lot of the.
Things changing, except actually it's gonna be better, cause it's gonna have curves and all that too.
So, a couple would be, you know, for, so for me, whatever, I just wanted you to kinda talk a little bit about the drainage, you know? And also, what changes are you gonna have to the lighting, you know, are you gonna have more lights now than, you know, like that?
If I.
Maybe that's good, maybe that's bad, and then, uh, what are the further, 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 further upgrade? Are you gonna put a bunch of bathrooms in or not?
Yeah.
So, those are the kinda things that the commission has to kinda in on before they grant a site waiver.
Well, I will put some regular outside lights around the three sides. The drainage is gonna be better actually, because there are no rain spouts on that building.
Years.
Never been. So, there will be red downs and everything like that on there, um.
I guess what I'm asking for is, in order to get your permit from the county, won't you have to submit a plat plan showing where you're in the building location?
My contractor's handling that, I don't know. I don't.
I would.
He will, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
The question, that's.
Alls he asked me to do, see to get the permit through the town. Once I get the permit from the town, he will submit to the, whatever he needs with the county. And he's worked with Tony Town before, he's, he's done buildings like the Hitchman and, and someone else, I don't know who else.
That'd be part of the building permit issue, 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 issue.
That, as part of this process, we ought to have that information, then. So, so he stated that it's gonna be on the same county and everything like that.
Right, so it's.
But.
I don't think I should hold this decision, we're here for the night, but my, my question is, same footprint basically, so, but.
The same thing, it just re- lease, sublease it after story, just.
Okay, is that permitted?
Um, I don't, pose you this way, it's been, been done that way for a while, I mean, you've had the, yeah, I, I know, well.
If we could to Leonardi Seafood.
Yeah.
Do, or, uh.
Dolly Stays, 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 cannery factory.
The tire shop was on the corner, I mean.
I'm asking, is it permitted, or you have to do, uh, special exceptions to allow, or what?
So, it's, it's, um, this is general business, so warehousing would typically be in industrial. It's a big site, there's different uses on there, there is the auto store, um, you know, is the warehousing and accessories. It's been, it's been ongoing, and our code was several years ago to allow, um, industrial uses to happen in the general business district within existing buildings. So, that's how, um, plumbing came to be on Broad Street. That's not a use typically be in the general business district. Same thing with, uh, turnball plumbing on, on York Street. Both of those are, uh, you know, more service businesses, more some typically, 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 an industrial zone rather than general business, uh, because like a combination of, you know, office and warehousing and, you know, um, you know, material handling, things like that. Trucks going in and out.
Aren't we considering a self-storage down there by Turnball?
And that's industrial.
That's, that, that's industrial, okay, 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 okay.
Turnball's actually is industrial, it's the, the Johnson Plumbing is the one in the business.
Okay.
So, I, I misspoke about turnballs. Um, so, it, it's a little bit of an oddity here, because, um, you know, there are existing buildings that have been used for storage. Mr. Small's gonna retain a portion of one of them, uh, but then, but then, but then, but then, but then, but then, you know, the use, does that use continue on in a new? You know, it's, it's just a, a unique site that we're faced with. And, and I guess while I'm drawing on here, I'll, I'll just mention on the certificate application, Darrell's going to need to know the, 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 the line, so at some point, we'll need to know where the properties are. So, that, that should come out, you know, when the zoning application is, is submitted, because, you know, we need to know X feet from this property line, X feet from that property line, and so on. So, that's something that, that I guess Mr. Small's contractor will have with, 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 with.
So, for that area, you notice that the seniors are right beside it, and oddly enough, when, when, I guess, I guess, I guess the county built that, Jim, do you know? Those is the county building, but their setbacks are, um, unique, or just like, they, they must have bottled off your, your daddy. Yeah, it looks, it looks the same across the street in the county building.
All right. I'm satisfied with the answer, but I'll take it.
It's, right, it's essentially that's, that's the existing use that's out there.
Okay.
I mean, that existing use predates the zoning code and that, I mean, is, just cause we were doing the wrong thing doesn't mean we should keep doing the wrong thing. If, but, you know, by the same token, if, if it's been a, an allowed use, it, that's, 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 that's. Yeah, that's tough.
Business.
Yeah, I mean, cause it's right, it's not a general business use, but it's been used this way for how many years? I don't know, Pat, I'm, I'm, and I'm not trying to work against Dan.
We've been in that place since seventy-two possibly, and it's been a business ever, I mean, it's been a business. The forties, 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 forties? It was storage, it was storage, I mean, the cannery factory, we were actually in, it was a storage facility, that's what it was, it stored case. Nothing's changed.
So, that code revision a few years ago that allowed those industrial uses would allow some productive use of that were, that were, that were, that were, that were, you know, that were in existence before the current code. You know, the sewing factory on Broad Street is the perfect, it's an industrial building, but it's in the general's district now. You know, it was a sewing factory for, you know, years, and then more recently, it was a, a pick and pack with, um, that's books, 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 warehousing distribution. And, um, you know, so, the code sort of caught up to try to address some buildings so that people, you know, could put them to good use. So, we, we amended the code to allow those sort of industrial uses within general business district. So, um, so, 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 just the question of.
I mean, I understand that the use for the code, and I'm, you know, it, my concern is that if we cut at, you know, the, the next person who comes along and wants to do sort of general business, oh, well, you're letting this guy do it, so, you know, we, where do we stand on not opening ourselves up to, uh, 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 uh?
So, the question, I guess, really, code-wise is on, you know, is what's staying of the building, to call it an existing building, or, you know, are we talking about a new building, in which case, it really should conform to the general's use?
All right, I'm gonna ask for a motion, and there, and there, and there, and there, and there, and there, plan waiver to demolish buildings and rebuild and enlarge an existing building, so I'm looking for a motion on that.
I'm gonna approve the motion, the site plan waiver, two thirty Roberts Mill Road.
Is there a second? Okay, Brad made it, Bill seconded it, other dis, other dis, other dis, other dis, other dis, other dis, all those in favor, single pop is saying aye. unanimous, thank you. Chris, I didn't hear, what was your?
I abstained.
All right, ordinance and agree view, your report.
Okay. Stuff going on, whole lot of stuff. He's your boulevard zone. What's called Rarina's, it's a distillery, Jim and I have been, uh, April the twenty-seventh. Bollinger Park, I almost was able to move that, it's literally active site plan, the construction phase projects, one piece of papers, grading permit, chairman, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, last week, one day, so.
Question on that one, Bollinger Park, what, what changed? Bollinger Park from our last, from our last meeting?
From our last meeting, wasn't any other than, what was clarified was the entranceway, where it was located, it was just being clarified.
Yeah. Yeah, so the four hundred and forty-five foot, um, Dan, um, site, um, distance for, from the right, going in there, out of the park, that was already, um, worked out with the, um, county without a waiver, okay, or various rather. So, they would do that, 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 though. And, you know, cause it's a hundred thousand dollars in grants money, grant money that Ray's had to file for exception, extension, I think, twice. In any case, so the, the grading, um, the grading permit is the only thing we're waiting for, and, and obviously is ready to roll.
I, I don't suppose we.
Neighbors, 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 neighbors.
Some people we just can't please, and I'm not saying those, those two people are not, but somebody took one of our shiny, brand-new stakes and bought it in the city hall to, um, show us how happy it was. That's illegal in at least four languages, so hopefully he won't do that again. But, um, you know, we, we met, we, 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 we gave him a fence in their woods, then mort. That's where he sort of, that's where I sort of like, sort of lose focus on, on things. The, um, that park, um, in the one, um, in the one neighbor's instance, that park was a thing many, many years before they built it. Fair enough, they, they, they bought their house, but Bollinger Park was, was, was a thing, as far as I understand, by a short little bit. So, I can understand that, I mean, you know, we've all got five acres in the county or downtown Tony Town, so, and I, I get the differences and changes that it brings, yes. Yeah, you know, it's an ADA park, and the county and the state is spending a lot of money on trying to, uh, make these bikeways and, and walkways. So, it's, it's exciting, I'm not, I'm not a walker, not a walker too much, I ride my bike, but anyway, um, so, 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 so. The paper process.
Progress was made, I'll put it that way.
Hey, police to Moses, they have a shiny, brand-new permit, uh, that they're, they're now, um, ready to make some pieces, but it won't be long, be long, be long, be long, be long, be long. So, that's, that's, um, something we've gone through, it's, you know, the first time I've, I've gone through a simplified site process, and it wasn't that bad, wasn't that bad. Let's see. You know, my planning report, I'm, I had been, but I think, I think, I think, I think, I think, I think this from time to time with the county. What phase, or what, what's been approved, um, like, um, storage, um, I was asked by one of the, um, people down at Development Review, what, what phase we're in, because their plan, the first time we saw them, said, final. So, catch it, catch it, catch it, catch it, catch it, catch it, developers, if you submit a new drawing to us, I don't care if you change, just the hydro is five feet that way, and they, they, they change on the plan, I want a different date on the plan, you know? It'll help us, you know, down the road, especially if you, I save my planning commission stuff. I want a different date on the plan, you know, it'll help us, you know, down the road, especially if you, I save my planning commission stuff for the home, I'm like, is it, is it? They look a lot alike sometimes. Let's see, um. Oh, yeah, a couple of things, Chairman Parker, you talked me about, so the fees are on, uh, I'm sorry, not fees are, fees are in the mine, the evacra, some construction phase projects, 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 too. So we just have to, we, I say we, me. And Jim, Jim, be involved, we have to go back and make sure all the ASBills are, um, here, all the little small, not small things, very important things, so management's been squared away and signed over, uh, the works agreement. For return there, whatever monies that are left in escrow, um, um, once they send us a letter saying that they want their money, sometimes these companies forget, Sheetz is one of them, okay? You know, the gentleman I've been dealing with says, yes, I know, I bought out it too, so, so I'm not sure what to do there, but. These people off, off of here, y'all been out to Duffy lately? Looks like, looks like something's happening.
Putting some metal in.
Yep, so I'm going to ask Fane for a, a, uh, visit, because the main purpose of that large building is one machine, yeah, eliminates two jobs, but it's a nice company, they can keep those two, just two, just two, just two, just two, just two. Uh, no, sir, I have nothing else, unless you have questions for me?
Any question? Dan?
I got a question on the, so, uh, you sent us the plans to look at, right, so we got that, and, um, so it di- didn't appear like there were any, just to like the road width or the single entrance into the developer, and, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know, time. I mean, they're doing a lot of work without really addressing any of our concerns.
So the, the plot, what we normally see on, on, from a concept, you know, I mean, the right, I guess, because the plan's been around so long, they've really, you know, fleshed this out. The, I, 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 um, Marty, uh, I asked him, you know, last month, you wanted to present, so now, let, let it go a little bit more, and I have a feeling that hopefully next month, you're presenting, you know.
So, I'm sorry, I missed last month, so do we, did we, for a sec, 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 for a sec? For the, for the development, or no?
No.
We weren't at a point to be asked, and we just gave comments, it was a comment, question, answer, point.
So.
We granted the, we granted the site plan, right? That, well, I guess that was in. They have a concept plan that's approved, so we haven't seen their plan.
Right.
No, no, not at all, so. So on my report, the concept plan is granted on, um, twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, so, um. The, I don't know if, oh, 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 fifty houses or less, one entrance is, is, hasn't allowed before, I know the gym has reserves, but that, Dan, the gentleman over here, you know, I get you, um, the. So we'll wait to see what's on, I mean, I don't see how they could easily get a different way out of there, um, 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 I mean, but, you know.
Well, the whole thing is coming down to Soul's property, if that be part of the easement going through Soul's, or the second means out. Of this way, then is that could be part of the greenway, or is that good, that good, that good, that good, that good, that good street? Back to Harney Road, so, and I think we talked about that six months ago, or maybe, so we're waiting to hear more, I guess, from Souls, from the city council, these people.
Well, what, what is pleasing, easy, 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 just looked at the property, um, whether it be garnered, or, um, or, um, the, the, um, the commercial properties off of Allen Dale, they're willing to play. In fact, the property on Allen Dale, uh, where it nineties, they li- literally swap, wo- 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 accommodate for, um, one of the, um, one of the posses for the, for the, uh, so that's good, that's great, so everyone's playing so far.
So if we connect that to the Souls property, that would be two ways out.
Right.
You have two, you have two means.
The Souls property that's going to happen when?
When.
Okay, 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 okay.
I mean, just because we're talking about it, doesn't mean it's going to happen here or next year, but it needs to make sure that it's consistent with all the, with everything else that's coming here. And the other thing was, if, if they're going to have a private road. And Soul will not, will not, will not, will not, will not, or, or should I say, the, the greenway. It's an issue for the city to work out.
Right.
So, if that helps, I mean, we don't know a lot until they, they come before.
Presented the first time, they had a twenty-four foot street and they had parking lot, and then I didn't, 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 we're not going to have parking on one side, so I actually have a problem with that, because. You know, so you, you're, what do you need, three parts for residence, right, and two of them are in the garage or something like, whatever, so. Now when people come over, I, I don't, I kind of guessed over because they can't park in front of my house, I mean. Have, uh, streets that are any narrower than what's in front of my house, it just makes no sense, I shouldn't, I don't think it should be approved.
Yeah, I'm a fan of the wider streets as well, you know, it's funny, you know, like, like me, they came in, possible alleys, you know, back in oh-nine, or, and somehow, it, it gets forgotten, because I mean. I think back and, back and, back and, back and, back and, back and, it was Jim nine and twelve, and there's, employees changed, the developer made. You know, oh, shoot, um, scrutinize the road whist because the alleys aren't there now. Jim's teachings, we. It is easily, um, um, with the builders, thought for a long time, we, we don't need any new houses, I believe, but, um, I'm tickled that people want to be here. My town's hot right now, it really is, there's a lot of, um, activity in Marshall, the Inville lots, um, you know, the Danner project, the, 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 East Palmer Street by Trevanian. It's just, you know, it's a lot, well, may- maybe it's not a minor subdivision, I think it's a, maybe a lot line, but anyway, just developing a building in other block, a lot at the corner of, um, Bum Runner and, and Tony. There's some people over there that's probably going to bidding war.
Moving on. If nothing else, or. This is Senator Administrator, we'll move on Jay, see what Jay has for, so, Jim?
We have a, a specific report tonight, he's just hanging here in case we have questions.
So, did he have anything?
He did not.
Okay. We want, honey, 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 honey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, from the county, the triad date to the two thousand nineteen Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan was certified, um, was, 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 was consistent with the two thousand fourteen Carroll County Mass and the two thousand nineteen amendment. And to, the two thousand eighteen FEED comprehensive plan that is available online on our website, the triadion master plan will be reviewed in its entirety by the Planning and Zoning Commission this summer, and the, for the most. The annual report has been, um, completed, except it needs to be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it has been distributed staff for review and comment, um, we have not received anything, and we'll have that. We'll, um, transfer to the Department of Planning, the Maryland Department of Planning by July first, and for the econo, 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 and land use study, there were public workshops that were, there were three, and they were in April and May, and one was included. Tony Town at the Thunderhead Bowl and Grill, and, um, the workshops provided participants the opportunity to use play money to decide which industries they would like Carroll County to invest moving forward. What extent should the county prioritize business development patients, so they're trying to have a little fun with it as well, so now the outreach is completed, and it's moved to the report phase, um, the people who are doing the study, the organizations doing the study will get together, and that will be forthcoming.
Any idea when?
Nine, 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 nine.
Questions?
Thanks, Tiffany.
Old business.
Mr. Sherry, I make one, I want to point, clear up something, you all talked about monies the city gave him, he's talking about, uh, monies, um, econo, 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 econo for. Um, and they're, we're calling it the building plan, or it's called the building improvement plan, so it's not actually from Tony Town, but monies that were funded to Tony Town District, but we have a little. Alright, so just.
Okay. Okay, Jim, you have anything? Darrell?
I do not, sir.
Brad?
Nothing.
Okay, looks such, everyone, June the twenty-sixth, next meeting. Alright, all the way to, 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 to.
Move the motion to adjourn.
Okay. Get that, Darrell.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, folks, and thanks to folks up tonight, out there.